From Robert Boils, Planning Director, and it is regarding notice of resignation/retirement effective July 31, 2015.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
The, we'll certainly have an opportunity one more, I think, to say goodbye to Robert. He's a 26-year career and he's retiring, and we're certainly going to miss him. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White, Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number four by title or in its entirety?
Title.
This is a letter from Mayor Smith to the City Council members regarding the appointment of Chief City Engineer, and that will be Chris Raiburn.
Move to accept and file.
Chris who?
I mean, not Raiburn.
Wilburn.
Wilburn. We have a room.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Yes.
So move.
Yes. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number six by title or red?
Title.
This is a letter from Mayor Smith to council members regarding appointment of Director of Community Planning, effective August 1. Shawn Spencer will be appointed.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
You know, it's always been my intention, if we have qualified applicants that are internal, that I want to recognize them in promotion. And in these two situations, Chris has been here quite some time and brings a great former career and has done a wonderful job subbing over to Traffic Engineering Place for a year or two, and I am pleased that he agreed to take on this responsibility. And same as Shawn Spencer, has been here for 13 years as Robert's assistant, waiting his turn, and has served us, the city admirably, and I was honored to offer him that position also. So, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Whitby, good gracious, are we already there?
We are.
All right, let's go to unfinished business.
Oh 1538, Mayor Smith.
Hold it, please.
For consent agenda?
All right, anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
R 1598 and R 15101. Did we not have anyone sign up to speak public comment?
98 and 101. Okay, how about a motion on the remaining, on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Gene is in the audience. Gene, please stand up, maybe we can get you on the TV camera. Thank you for agreeing to serve, and thank you for bringing our county Judge, Judge Hyde, to the meeting. Judge, we are showing off tonight to show you how to really get a meeting done in order and in timely fashion.
I didn't call her, I said, "I never needed you to have this spoken."
Gene, thank you again. We know that you'll watch out what's going on up there at Lakewood, and you got big shoes to fill. Dr. Beavins was a great individual. 101.
R 15101, a resolution appropriating $30,000 for the completion of renovations to and purchase of cages for the adoption area at the North Little Rock Animal Shelter.
Move for adoption.
Motion, second.
Now, before we vote on this, we have some of our wonderful volunteers with the Friends of Animals. Y'all took the bull by the horns and did a magnificent job. $30,000 is tough to raise anywhere, anytime, by any organization, and I'm saying, job well done. Y'all made it really easy for us to look in and reach in and grab some money of our general fund to complete this project because of all your hard work. And I know that a lot of that is because of your love and allegiance for our director, Billy Grace, and Billy, you've done a great job. That's it. So, thank you all. Get out there and start raising some more money, and we'll find another project. How's that? Ms. Ross?
I was just wondering if Mr. Grace had something that he would like to say or something?
Thank you.
Right. Plus, I was wondering if we could have everybody stand up so we could give them an applause, everybody that's done all the hard work.
Yeah. Friends of Animals, y'all stand up and let us say thank you.
You represented all, Mayor. Just wanted to make this announcement. Marcia Mosin, then, our treasurer.
Did a really good job there. She's worked real hard. Thank you.
As have a lot of other Friends of Animals people, and also the family of the late Dr.
David Beavins Jr., as you know, is a treasured friend. He was our treasurer also, and we miss him dearly, but they are contributing greatly to this effort. We also had two additional $5,000 donors. One wished to remain anonymous, the other, I think, is Mr. Melton's family. And we thank all of them, and we appreciate the City Council. You've been very supportive, and we always appreciate you. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
White.
On the motion, White?
She's getting her shirt.
Did you say yes or no?
Yes.
Taylor? Taylor?
I don't have a T-shirt to wave, but yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We always knew Alderman White was a grand standard.
That's right.
Great opportunity, Beth. Okay, Ms. Whitby.
R 15103, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Klaske County Tax Collector against certain rural properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
About a motion?
So move. Second.
Call a public hearing on R 15103 for liens filed with the tax collector. Comments? Certainly.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't sign in, but I wanted to. I'm with one of the property owners, Keaton Properties. Was I supposed to have signed in early?
That's all right. This is a public hearing, so you're all right.
I just, I hear briefly from Keaton Properties, we got this.
What is your name?
My name is Jerry Larkowski, L-A-R-K-O-W-S-K-I. The owners just bought this property back in, like, I think it was January, and new owners, new crew, trying to get them to cut where they're supposed to. I think we got the notice by the time everybody got all together, the time had run, and I just wanted to see if there was a plea for first-time offenders that y'all might waive at the first time and double or nothing next if we do it again, but we have nothing but just mercy to say that we're sorry and we didn't intend for this to happen and.
Now, I don't think these are fines. These are charges that were spent on that property, and so they can't be waived. You know, what I think we can do, Counselor, is if you satisfy this lien before we go to the county clerk's office, we can take it off, can't we?
Absolutely, Mayor. And Section 3 has provided that the Director of Code Enforcement is empowered to, and actually ordered to, remove any names from the list for liens that are satisfied prior to recording.
Okay. So all you got to do is get with Code Enforcement, Tom Wadley is the Director over there, pay the lien, and it won't be filed.
I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Thank you very much.
And is this the property at 1624 West 16th?
No, this is 16 Remount Road.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking for, I thought you said Keith or something.
Keaton Properties is the owner.
Keaton Properties, okay.
Would you tell me the name of the gentleman at the?
Tom Wadley.
He's standing behind you.
Yeah, there he is, right there. He'll talk to you on the way out the door.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is oh 1555, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the City Government of North Little Rock for mid-year 2015, first reading.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
We suspend all readings?
Motion to suspend all readings.
Second.
Second. Questions?
I believe we have an amendment also.
Yeah, so it's.
Go ahead.
After you suspend readings, we do have an amendment.
All right, on the motion, suspend readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Amendment has been passed out, I think, hasn't it already?
It has, Mayor, and it replaces Page 5 of 11, which really is just renaming some three positions for emergency services.
Yeah. Captain Montgomery is here, and he thinks he can get a better bang for his buck if we move some of those call takers into dispatch program. So, with that, do I have a motion to adopt this? How about a motion to amend?
Motion to amend. Second.
So what is being amended? Is this what we have on our, at our seats today, or?
It's just what's on, what was passed out tonight, it's only on Page 5.
There should be an attached Page 5 that has, on Section 13, you can see where there are three positions eliminated from 911 call taker that are reallocated to dispatcher.
Do you have a copy of the amendment that was passed out?
No, I don't have the amendment. Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Where were those positions at?
Questions?
Adding three and taking away three, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Renaming them, kind of renaming them.
Well, they're going to have a little bit of job different.
I thought that was my.
Call taker to dispatcher is a little bit different.
I'm good.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt?
So move.
You haven't voted on the amendment yet.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right, on the motion to amend.
Was this amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh 1556, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting special use to allow an American Legion post in a C-2 zone for property located at 325 West 29th Street in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Let's spend the rules and place it on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting special use to allow an American Legion post in a C-2 zone for property located at 325 West 29th Street in the City of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move to suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting special use to allow an American Legion post in C-2 zone for property located at 325 West 29th Street in the City of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
About a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions?
Is Mr. Chris well here?
Bob is not here.
Okay, well, I have some, is this an American Legion that they're moving from some other location?
Yeah, this is American Legion Post number one. It was the very first one created in the entire country, and it's been over in Little Rock, and they sold their property over there and bought this property, not aware that it wasn't zoned correctly for a Legion post. And so I'm trying to shorten this a little bit by not going through planning so that they can begin their remodel for the lodge.
As far as parking, is there adequate parking there?
Yeah. It's not a huge lodge by any means, and they, he said that every once in a while they'll have a little dance, but not much.
Well, we have that over否parking for the senior center too, that they can use. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, they're excited about it, they're realtor, and them didn't have the right kind of communication on zoning, so.
Okay.
So, we're trying to fix it for them. On the motion.
On motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh 1557, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow automobile sales in a C-4 zone for property located at 920 East Broadway in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Do I have a motion? It can sit on the agenda, or we can go ahead and vote on it.
Move to suspend rules and place it on its second reading.
How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow automobile sales in a C-4 zone for property located at 920 East Broadway in the City of North Little Rock, first and final reading.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion. Comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to speak to the motion. I met with the owners or with the applicants and looked at the site. It's right at the cusp of where we're really doing some good things as far as development. Their existing facility is nice, and they do a good job, but when I looked at the site, I just didn't think it was the direction we were headed as far as revitalization of the area. They have a REM shop at the current location, but just looking at the site, looking at how the car sales, the car lot part that was going to be constructed on that corner, just didn't, I just wasn't in favor of it, and, you know, maybe if it was another location, maybe it'd be better, but that just wasn't, it's not the ideal location, in my opinion.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Fouch?
No.
No.
The motion failed.
Motion failed. Thank you.
Oh 1558, Alderman Witcher.
Call it, please.
An ordinance assigning and expanding special use previously authorized for property located in an R-4, for property in an R-4 zone located at 6800 Camp Robinson Road in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move, okay, Mayor, two things I'd like to add. Ms. White and Mr. Height, as co-sponsors of this.
No objection?
Okay. I'd like to suspend the rules and place it on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance assigning and expanding special use previously authorized for property in an R-4 zone located at 6800 Camp Robinson Road, second reading.
Move to suspend rules and place it on the third reading.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance assigning and expanding special use previously authorized for property in an R-4 zone located at 6800 Camp Robinson Road, second reading.
Move to suspend rules and place it on the third reading.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance assigning and expanding special use previously authorized for property in an R-4 zone located at 6800 Camp Robinson Road, second reading.
Move to suspend rules and place it on the third reading.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Okay, public comment, the only one signed up is Mr. Ard.
First, I'd like to thank the street department for coming down Camp Robinson and fixing it so we could see how to get out on Camp Robinson for many, many months, and actually, many, many years. The shrubs had got so tall, we couldn't see how to get out. Now we can. Also, I'd like to see the city start enforcing rules or example banners. There's money there. As I suggested to a couple of Aldermen, add $100 a year to their license if they want to do banners, and let them do all they want since you don't enforce them. And they get caught without paying the extra $100. Fine them around $500. We need to, we're going to have it on the books. It needs to be enforced, and there's lots of others that are not enforcing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. Ms. Robinson?
My question is for the city attorney. My constituents were concerned, are concerned about power outages, and I tried to explain to them the best that I knew how, but they quickly advised me that I was not, you know, in the electric department. So, what I was wondering is if the electric department has a PR person, okay, that could speak with neighborhood groups, or they meet at, let's say, Neighborhood Services, or something go out in the city newsletter, in layman terms, kind of explaining to people why this one can have power and two doors down doesn't have power, and three doors down has power and across the street have power. So, you know, if we could kind of get that information out, it would help me out a lot. Now, they've advised me they are not about to go to 1621 Maryland because they don't know, first of all, where Maryland is or how to get there.
Well, and it's quite a drive out there, but we, you know, we'd be happy to meet with these groups and explain to them, and it is confusing sometimes, certainly when people have their electricity out. You know, we've had some storms lately, some of them have been kind of rough, and we have power outages, and it tries the patience of patient people. And I understand that, and I think information helps, and we are able to reach out to some of these neighborhood group meetings if they have some, and they want somebody to come talk about it and kind of explain some of the challenges. I think they'll understand better. Our circuits intertwine, and sometimes when you look out and your power's out and your neighbor's power is in and out, that can be pretty frustrating. It can be. And probably you're right that information and better communication is the key. That's something that we can do better. Glad to help.
We'll go straight there. I mean, if you'll tell us who it is, if it has concerns, we'll go knock on their door and explain it to them. You know, this particular storm we had two or three weeks ago was straight line winds, which covers a large area of the city. You know, we had an after-action meeting to see what we did right, what we did wrong. All, we had six circuits down at one time and 10,000 people. We had all six circuits back up within eight hours. You know, that's a great job. Now, with the straight line winds, we had a lot of local damage. Could be a little tree fell in your backyard and knocked out your transformer or your service line, and then we had to do onesies and twosies, and that's when it really gets slow, and that's what happened for the last 200 customers that were out. It took us about 24 hours to get them all back on. So, that was the issue. Tornadoes are really sometimes easier because they're pretty located, you know, in just one area, but we'd rather have straight line winds, no injuries, and so that was why it took 24 hours. Any other comments? Ms. Ross?
Well, I have to say, I agree with Mr. Ard on the banners, and something that I would like for the city to look at is possibly, you know, how we've moved a code officer over to sanitation. That's worked great. I mean, you know, I have to say, he's done a phenomenal, you know, he's done a phenomenal job, but possibly moving a code officer to planning. Planning is the one that has the information. All these different businesses, these conditional uses, these special uses and everything, and planning is the one that would have that information on all the different businesses. I think that possibly having a code officer in planning strictly with businesses, you know, because we, I drive by some of these stores and they're, you know, the windows are covered in signs, you know, it's probably a percentage of the windows is supposed to be covered, and so I wish that's something that we would look at, possibly having someone they may could help. Ms. Whitby, as far as collection of, you know, business license, or I just, I think it's pretty much a full time.
Tom would throw a fit if we took another code officer away from him, but if we wanted to add one, I'm sure that it's just all about money.
But the banners, I mean, you know, I'm driving down the road, and people have got their little sandwich board out in the middle of the sidewalk. You can't even get down the sidewalk. You know, that's little things like that, that if we had an individual that could just, strictly with business.
Good idea. Yeah, good idea.
We talked about it several, I don't know, three, four years ago, about possibly charging for signs and banners and the monies from, I mean, the revenues from those charges would more than pay for a person.
We do charge.
So, we'd be willing to head up that task force. It won't be popular, but hey, we got to do what we got to do.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I frankly personally know of at least one liquor beer distributor that would love to see banners banned, you know.
The feathers.
They do it because, they put up banners because defense, not offense, and I'm not sure, but I bet you that if we were to ban certain types of banners in North Little Rock, that a couple of the businesses and distributors would probably say hallelujah, thank you.
Let's walk softly on that.
The what, that?
Let's walk softly on that.
Oh, I know, I'm just.
Ms. Ross?
And one of the side effects with the banners too is the poles that they leave out there. I mean, you can go through some, I'm not going to mention any names, but there are some shopping centers that, the whole front of it is just empty poles, you know, it's like fence poles and signs and everything, so, I mean, that certainly would clean up the city, and this, anyway, I'll stop.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Robinson?
We've got a problem in War II where people are dumping tires and their garbage on vacant properties, and the people, the owners of the properties say they go out and they clean it up, and they come back three or four days later, and there's more stuff on their property, and I don't know what to tell them.
Nor do I. You know, we certainly, if we're made aware of it, we can certainly keep an eye on it. We do have some mobile cameras that we could possibly put up and see if we could catch the perpetrator. We're hoping that this new law that we wrote on used tires is going to stop that, at least put a big dent in it, and as far as just normal trash, you just got to catch them. You know, we had them dumping right in front of Cata Building for a year before we finally caught them. Yes, ma'am.
It's been pretty effective in War II. I know Alderman White and I, but we've had them go out and put the no dumping signs, and it's been pretty effective. We've got those in several places, just to put the sign on. It's, people have them in their yard.
If you want, identify the location, tell Chris, and we'll get a sign up.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, particularly at the end of Rogers Street, it's one of their favorite places, tires and trash, so maybe if we could look at doing maybe a sign or cameras would be helpful because it's almost, I talked to Mr. Ford the other day, and it's constant.
Wander down that way, Chris, and look and see what you think. Thank you. Anybody else? Have a motion?
So move.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
28 minutes.
About like 30 minutes.
Not bad.
Yeah, how about that?[1725.92]